It was a good conference. He's very good. Yeah. But he said he had some things to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the president.
I had a lot of them. That's good.
Some of the questions were pretty good.
Oh, well, we'll get to it. Public hearing, I'll explain what a public hearing is.
I tried to take answers. Usually you do take answers.
It's not what I heard.
That's you.
Is there a, is there a men's agenda in the folder? I'm not showing the, I'm not showing the resolution.
It wasn't.
Yeah. The resolution's in there, but I don't see it on the agenda. You know?
Because when I look at it, the second item of the tax.
It's our Facebook.
So we posted.
And it's on that.
Okay.
We posted.
Is it on the chairman's green copy? Okay.
Will you hand me one of those? She was crossing her eyes. Thanks for the make. You got it?
Yeah, it's on. It's on the public here. It's just, for whatever reason, it didn't update the folder.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everyone. I have 601 on the 25th of March. We have a form present, and so I'll call to order the Upton County Board of Commissioners. I'd ask you if you have any electronic devices that you go ahead and silence them. Please call to order. All right. If you will, please stand. We'll have Reverend Turner give us an indication, then we'll follow with the pledge.
I'd just like to say one thing. The Upton County Ministerial Association, upon the request of commissioners, leads in the indication for them, and we're proud to be able to do it. We thank y'all for asking us. Let's go to the Lord. Father, we come into your presence today just looking at a beautiful day. And now, Father, we've come together as the county commissioners. They have come, Lord, to take care of the business of our county. And I'm asking, Lord, that you give them wisdom. Wisdom to make the right decision, to be led, Lord, and everybody who's here, that their attitude be good, that all the responses be appropriate. So, Lord, we just put it in your hands, knowing this is going to be a good meeting. We claim this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is, of course, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a, I'll start motion from Commissioner Watson and a second from Commissioner Ellington. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Agenda is approved. The first thing on the agenda is public hearings. We're going to have two. First public hearing is a special exception. SPX 25, 2025-01, owner and applicant Jason and Walt Patterson of Upton County, Georgia, have requested that Upton County permit a family cemetery at 957 Jug Town Road. Cemetery use is listed under the Special Exceptions section of the AR zoning district, section 504B, 15, Upton County zoning ordinance. The property is zone AR with 112.5 acres, with a proposed cemetery of 200 feet by 200 feet, .9 acres, and is further defined as tax parcel 053001. Okay. And which sheet is the Jug Town Road, the blue one?
Yes.
Okay. And so, we did pass an ordinance on how we conduct our meetings and how we conduct public hearings. So, way a public hearing will work is first we'll have a presentation as to what the item is all about, so everybody understands what we're talking about. And then we'll have the applicant and anyone who's for the position speak. An applicant gets 10 minutes to speak. Then we have opposed speak. And opposed gets three minutes each for however many folks there are. Right? And then, once they're done, the four gets the rebuttal. All right? So I just want to lay that out for everyone. Okay. Doug, you want to lay out what our...
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Got that. All in favor? Okay. Doug?
Yes, sir. We have applicants, the property owners, Jason and Walt Patterson, requesting approval from Upton County for special exception, family private cemetery, .9 acres on 112 acres that they own at 957 Jug Town Road. Cemeteries in general are approved by special exception and not by right in the AR zoning. This is the location of, in your staff report, you'll see, and we'll get to the graphics in a bit. The location of this family cemetery is the north central portion of the 112 acres. So in no way is it visible to Jug Town Road. In the area, we've got multiple, our single zoning of AR, and we also have proximity to the county line. We have review standards for special exceptions as required by our ordinance and state law. These are the guidelines by which we must analyze these proposals. We also have the comp plan, in this particular case agricultural, is the character area. All right, going into the criteria, generally speaking, the criteria about nuisances and things that will not be compatible with the neighbors. In this case, you've got a one acre cemetery for the family only. It's not a commercial cemetery. We have requested and will request that those be part of the conditions of approval, that this not be a commercially used cemetery. So, with a use like this, there are going to be very few impacts. There aren't going to be nuisances. It's going to be a very small cemetery for family, basically. Staff recommends approval of the special exception. At the planning commission meeting, February 10th, they also recommended approval for O with a number of conditions. I'll just briefly hit the requirements there that they request, the imposed conditions, that, of course, all state regulations dealing with cemeteries and the disposal of bodies be properly followed. And we asked, you know, for the designation, we understand that this is for 400,000 square feet or .9 acres for family members, friends of the family, and similar non-commercial burials. We ask, and this is a traditional, again, all of these are pretty traditional with the exception of one, that within three months of the first burial, an affidavit of burial and of cemetery be in place. Number five is a new one recommended by the planning commission. We've never really had this one before. They actually ask for the plat, the current plat and the current deed to reflect the presence of the easements and the cemetery. So the planning commission asks you to do that. And then, of course, number six, we just request that this be maintained properly by the family. Going into the graphics, the light blue line in the graphics is...
I don't know if I have it.
Okay.
And when I try to switch it over...
It won't switch over?
Not on that.
All right. Well, if, I don't, do you have my staff report in front of you, or do you have...
This is what I have right here.
Okay.
You tell me where you want me to start.
All right. Well, we're on the aerial photograph. Okay. There we go. Okay, right there. Of course, it's skewed for the audience. I apologize. But where it, again, is north is to the right. You can see where the location is. There is flood plain on the property, but you can see that the location of the cemetery is nowhere near the flood plain. It's well outside of it. All right, and then, okay. The next attachment I've got is hopefully somewhere in there. You've got, the Pattersons sort of jumped and decided, well, let's go address the easement that was requested for the cemetery and for the actual easement, access easement to get there. So you see at least the first draft of that. There were questions in the interim period about whether this was actually going to be a separate lot. That was confusion with the Pattersons, and I explained, no, 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 that's not what we want. This wouldn't even meet the minimum lot size for an AR parcel. What we want is just a simple access easement, doesn't create a separate lot. Unless you make a separate lot, we don't want that. And then the cemetery itself, .9 acres, again, the planning commission just asked that it be reflected on the plat and in the deed that it exists, and therefore, there wouldn't be any condition, or hopefully through the paperwork, it wouldn't be lost in the future. Now, the photos you saw earlier were taken by the applicant. What I tried to do is, as best as I could on a very foggy day, take some photos. This is the general area where the cemetery would be, into the tree line, and then I probably can't see them here, but there are some individual flags that show the edge. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Doug, I just want to make sure I understand. So, it's .9 of 112.5 acres.
Yes, sir.
Right? And so, in the state of Georgia, any parcel that has a burial on it becomes tax exempt. So how do we address...
Well, what I had explained to me by the tax assessor is it has to be applied for. So it's not an automatic. The applicant has to apply for that exemption, and then it would be granted, I assume, by the tax assessor's office.
Yeah, the tax assessor's office, the board of assessors, can approve a tax exemption for the parcel. And so, the, of course, the concern here is we got 112.5 acres of usable land, and we're going to have .9 acres of a cemetery. Right? And so, the issue becomes, do we have 112.5 acres of land now tax exempt?
I'm signed up for that. That would be a tax assessor question. I would think not, but I'm not the tax assessor's office or the chief appraiser, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not a lawyer or a tax assessor. I did take two days of tax evaluation and taxation indoctrination or training, whatever you want to call it, two weeks ago. And that was one of the areas that we covered. That's why I asked this question, because in that training, they were like, it should be parceled off and assessed separately.
Well, for instance, in Upton County, you will see most of the cell towers. They are taxed separately, and you'll see them marked out on the tax assessor's website. They're not separate parcels. They remain the same parcel from a zoning standpoint, a deed standpoint, but for tax purposes, you'll see it called out. Believe me, that was an education for me when I first started working for the county. I thought it was a separate parcel. They said, no, 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 for tax purposes, you'll see a line around it, but there's no separate deed for it. It's not a separate tax parcel.
Okay. All right. So, is that all for the, got any questions for Doug?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
It's showing on here the easement, which is the strangest easement I've ever seen in my life. How, you know, is the easement taxable?
That's a tax assessor's question.
I mean, that, I don't know how long that easement is. I don't know if somebody here from the family to speak on it, but, you know, it starts at the house, goes along the road, and does it follow a property line, or...
Probably.
It goes around the swamp.
Okay. But it's all on the same, it's not...
Yes.
Somebody else's property?
No, sir. It's all one property. It just has to make a curve to go around the swamp.
And how wide is it?
Currently, I think he's got it at 20 feet.
Yes, 20 foot. It says on there that it's an existing trail?
Yes, sir.
And will be recorded?
Yes, sir. Any other questions for Doug? All right. Do we have the applicant? Does applicant want to speak?
My dad just wanted a private cemetery on the land, and basically in the middle of the property, at the middle field, up in the northeast corner, behind the tree stand. There's a nice little hall up there, and that's what they picked. It's not accessible by any other way, as you can see with the easement. It's remote, it's occluded. On both sides, it's not envelopable. It's just a nice little remote spot.
Okay. Private?
Yes.
You're Jason, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And we didn't have anyone else signed up to speak for or against? All right, so, any motion before we have a discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special exception.
Close.
I think it's a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Jones makes a motion to close. Commissioner Biggs, get a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special exception, 2025-01.
Okay. Commissioner Watson makes it.
With the conditions.
Okay.
I'll say.
And Commissioner Jones, second. Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Biggs, you have any questions?
No. Just don't sell the land.
And it's going to be recorded in all the conditions listed on it?
No questions? Okay. So, I did have some questions from Doug. He answered them earlier. So this is free and clear? And you've owned it, the family's owned it for forever?
Since 1970.
Yeah. So, all right, and I don't have any questions, so we call for vote.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing for beer and wine package sale license. Applicant is on file with commission office from Kareem Dahia on behalf of Morning Group LLC, doing business at Sunnyside Country Store located 3108 Crest Highway, Thomaston, Georgia 30286. Can I get a motion to open them?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Jones is second. All in favor? All right. Okay. Doug, you want to give us a presentation for Ms. Jones?
So, Jason, do you want to...
I can just go over the executive summary real quick if you want to. So, just in brief, Mr. Chairman, we have seven criteria with which we evaluate the application and the applicant. Those are inclusive of the application form itself, the supporting documentation, including proof of ownership or lease agreement, business license, detailed floor plan, and the state alcohol license application, compliance with criminal history and background requirements, payment of all applicable fees, provision of a certified measurement demonstrating that the business location is 100 yards from the nearest school or church, is verified by county staff, successful completion of the building inspection on the premises, and proper notarization of all the forms. So, based on that, the applicant meets or exceeds all seven criteria, and we're recommending it for approval.
Okay. Any questions for the staff?
So, how do we measure distance when we're doing the distance from the store to the church?
With a wheel. With a wheel? It goes from the door of the establishment, desiring to sell alcohol, to the nearest property line of the church, school, or alcohol treatment center.
So it's not from property line to property line?
No, it's from the door, front door to property line.
That's not correct.
Walking, walking.
Yeah.
Not line of sight.
Okay. So I asked the same question, Commissioner Biggs. We have an attorney here. If you could explain to us the precedent, how this has been done consistently since the ordinance has been in place?
Well, I mean, I think the main thing is that our ordinance follows track state law, how we measure. So, as far as, I mean, that's the way Doug measured it every time, right?
Can you explain? With a wheel, and it's from the door, and it's not, it's not straight line distance, it's a prescribed path?
Correct.
And that's how it's been done consistently in the county since the ordinance has been in place?
Every time.
Mr. Chairman, I got a few questions.
Okay.
So, define, describe path. Can somebody tell me what defined path is? Is it, I got a path, you got a path, you got a path? We're going to all take a different path?
Direct line of travel is how the state code puts it. Most, most direct line of travel.
So, is that by foot?
Essentially, yes.
All right, so...
I mean, that's, that would be the, in my opinion, I know my petition, but you don't want it driven. You want it, you know, I think the way Doug has started, and I don't know if that's how they taught you or how other, you know, places you're doing it, but that's the way surveyors do it. They use a wheel.
Right. I get that. I mean, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is that, you know, that leads a lot to the imagination of the person who, not to say that, I guess what I'm saying is, this location has been here, oh gee, since the 70s, and it's never been able to sell alcohol because there was a church across the road.
Well...
And I'm not pinning that, I'm just saying, what changed? What changed?
Obstacles were placed in the way of the person walking. So, if you remember, Ernie Vaughn owned some property on Yatesville Highway, and he was trying to sell it, and he put up a picket fence because there was a church diagonal 74 heading towards Yatesville. And it was decided by the county attorney at that time that that fence was enough of an obstacle that I had to head west before I could head east to get to the church property. In this case, it's been decided that there's a three-foot ditch there, and that that is enough of an obstacle that I have to head east of, to Sunnyside Drive, and then come back right or west on 74 to get to the church property. Because of those obstacles, I am further away.
Well, I think, too, another thing that happened, am I right, Doug? They sold a piece of the property, too, right?
Well, at one time, this church did own the house directly across the street, and so that did, they sold it, I think, for either landlord purposes or for somebody to live in. So they no longer own that house right next door, the property line. So their property line, or a church property line, did move a little bit more to the west.
Right. So that, I mean, that's the real lead I'm looking for, if there's a reason there. Okay, I understand that. And so, something has changed, the church property line has moved. So the last question I have would be legal. So, tonight, we couldn't sit here and say, we're going to deny this based upon you too close, because if it meets by law, it meets. Regardless if I like it or I don't like it, by law, it meets.
As far as the measurement's concerned, absolutely. And it mirrors state law, which I think is important for posting it, too.
Does it define what an obstacle is, or is that up to interpretation?
It's a, yeah, it's, Doug and I had a very lengthy conversation about that. You know, it's, it all falls back to the most direct line of travel. So, if there's an obstacle in the way to get there, then, you know, you got, you got to measure around it. So, what that obstacle is, again, up to interpretation, but we, he brought up the previous one where there was a, there was a fence put up. Well, then we got into, what kind of fence does it need to be? So, you know, it could be, and one thing I mentioned to Mr. Curry was, you know, it could be a plexiglass fence that you can see, you know? So there's really no bright line rule on the obstacle.
And the three-foot ditch is what is considered the obstacle?
Right. Because there's no vehicles that are going to be driving through there. I mean, probably...
What is the current distance?
390. 300 feet. Oh, yes. The actual is probably 395-ish.
Yes, it's 395, right.
Give or take.
And our code says 300.
You see a photo in the staff report, Mr. Chairman, that shows a cone right in front of that house. That's where the 300-foot mark is. So if you see that photo, the 300 feet is basically in front of the house that used to be owned by that church, and then the extra 90, 95 is as close to that corner of the church property as I could estimate it was.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Any other questions for staff?
Anybody signed up for anybody?
So, first, is there the applicant here to speak? Okay. Let's just state your name and whether you're a resident.
I'm Kareem, representing Sunnyside Country Store. And we've been in Thomaston for about three years with our existing business at Train Depot. This store has been there for ages. People know them by thrift store flowers. Again, you know, we wanted to upgrade the store. We have done a lot of work with the recommendation and consultation from Mr. Jason, Mr. Doug. I have promised a good country store. Those old days, if you remember 20, 30 years back, you don't see nowadays. You know, people come and out gone. My wishing for this store is I want everyone in the neighborhood and everyone passing by to enjoy the store, you know, get breakfast in the morning. We have done a lot of work. I assure you, once you see the store, you'll be pleased with it. And we have promised a lot of things, that this store is going to be appropriate for all ages to come and enjoy. And I told Mr. Jason to begin with, you know, we are not a gaming machine or nothing like that. That's the last thing you would see in my store. So I want all the kids, anyone, you know, they should be easy in and out, and they shouldn't be worried like, okay, I don't want to take my kid to the store, you know? So hopefully, everyone's going to enjoy the store.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, I got a question?
Yeah. Sir?
Sir? I just have a couple questions, just so, not really related, but I understand you purchased a place across the road also, but do you, are you going to continue to operate it as a package store?
Yes, we're going to leave it on, yeah. I mean, sir, yes, the food is going to go over here. What I've learned in a couple of months, there are people like the drive-through. It's just, it might be, we might just cut the hours a little bit here and there, but yeah, it's going to be open. I mean, so I'd rather leave it open and closed than just, you know, over the period of time the property is going to deteriorate. We do have plans for it, which I was going to come to Mr. Jason and talk to him, and if he says, you know, that's going to suit that property, then we might, you know, pursue it some more ideas where we can have more people stopping in that property.
That's all I have. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have two people signed up for public comment. Oh, we have Reverend Turner, and you're to speak against, right? And then we have Leon Fowler. Is that right? Are you speaking for or against?
Oh, for.
Okay. You get to go, come first.
Can I speak from here or do I need to walk up there?
Please come up so we can see you. You've got the microphones for the folks on YouTube. Just... Just need your name and whether you're a resident of Upson County.
My name is Leon Fowler. My father built that store. It's his life, and it once thrived, and I will see it thrive, thrive again. Like I say, it's, it's his life, it's my life, big part of my life. And it's always been an asset to the community. And I'm a Deacon, Friendship Baptist Church, a couple miles up highway maybe, Deacon and Clerk. And the Lord does not say you don't drink, says you don't drink to access, excess. And so I'm in favor of everything, whatever he does. He's also offered to give discounts to our fire department, first responders, EMS, law enforcement, whatever. If he'll keep his prices right, that'll work. Discounts don't get his prices back. Anyway, I am in favor, and as is my brother. And we sold the place in nineteen ninety-seven, and it's sort of gone downhill since, but now it looks great. And I'm just so proud that Mr. Cody has done what he's done, and I'm proud of what he's going to do and what the store will become.
Okay.
Once again, an asset, third speaker. And I appreciate you hearing from me.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Reverend Turner.
Ask permission, maybe be a little, not real long.
Yeah, you got three minutes, we have to hold your tongue.
The ordinance that we have before us that's written, the description is, to the middle of the road, up the road, down the road, into the parking lot. That's what I've been told. Now, what they have done is they've taken the two entrances to the facility out. So now they go from the property line, down seventy-four, down Sunny Side Road, up the middle of Sunny Side Road, into the entrance to the door. From the property line of the property of the church to the front door of the business is eighty-one yards. Now, they literally could take the building, put it all the way out next to the road, and be about thirty yards from the church property, and pass the legal description according to the ordinance. The ordinance needs to be changed. It was originally for the protection of the churches and the schools. This is written for the protection of the people applying for beer and wine. Now, I want that store to be very successful. I'm going to patronize it, but let's quit beating around the bush, we don't need another beer and wine place, and it is not legal unless you stretch it and change it like the ordinance says.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay. All right, we need to, that was the last person who had signed up to speak. Do you motion there?
Did one other comment being made, please?
He didn't sign up before the meeting.
I came right in at six o'clock, I was not able to get here in time, so bad.
Yeah, I'm sorry you didn't sign up, this, the rules that we're going by. Okay, can I get a motion to close to public here?
Second.
Mr. Jones and Commissioner Watson? All in favor? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion on approval of the, of the license?
I'm making a motion to go ahead, and he's, he's met all the boundaries and everything else to go ahead and approve this.
Here I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Jones will have a second. I'll make a second. Okay, any discussion?
I think we need to just go back and look at the ordinance that we have set up, you know? I think it's really, really outdated, and we have to protect the citizens that we serve.
Well, I think, you know, I think we also need to, to go back and revisit that seriously.
Yeah.
But we haven't, and this one here is here, so.
Here today, we don't have a lot of choice but to do.
Right.
But going forward, we need to go back and just look at every single ordinance that we have, and make sure that citizens can get that with it, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I highly agree with both, we're kinda in a quandary here, but I mean, ultimately, I don't particularly, I'm not fond of the way the ordinance is written, but according to our attorney, we're all following state law, and we're all bound to follow state law. I may have to, but I don't like it, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, so Reverend Turner, I will tell you, I, you brought it to our attention at the last meeting, and I appreciate that. I personally pulled up the ordinance after you spoke to me, I read it, I, you know, and so I asked the attorney, I'm reading the language here, I need to know what does this mean legally? And I, like you, I went to the store, you probably see me on the cameras, I went to the store, stood at the door, tried to figure it out. And where we are today is, we have used this methodology for previous licensing. And so to not approve this would be an exception, you know? So I think that's where we're at today, is the way we've done it, the ordinance is dated twenty sixteen, we can talk about it at the work session, how we wanna move forward with this, if we wanna make some changes, but that's, being transparent with everyone, that is what, as transparent.
Can I make one other comment? Please.
Not right now, Mr. Reverend Turner. Okay, so that's, that's where we are. So just, just being transparent, that's where we are. So, any further discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner B?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion carries. All right. All right. Next up is public comments. Okay, for public comments, we have a five-minute timeline, just ask that you state your name and whether you're a resident of Upson County. All right? And first one up is Ms. Tammy Boils. My neighbor.
Yes, sir. Tammy Boyle, I am a resident of Upson County. Since Brightmark's announcement in April of twenty twenty-four, I have dedicated countless hours of researching the industry, the company, and the potential impact in Upson County. While the Board of Commissioners have refrained from comments, it is my belief, and many here, that the Board of Commission has a responsibility to ensure the safety, the economy, and the environmental integrity of our county. We request that the Board of Commission take proactive measures to protect the safety of our citizens, and the environment, and the economy. Specifically, we want the Board of Commission to work with the county attorney and any other knowledgeable individuals to develop an ordinance, a resolution, or a binding legal contract requiring Brightmark to establish a trust fund, a performance bond, or a surety bond. This fund or bond would set an amount sufficient to cover potential costs of environmental cleanup or remediation, firefighting efforts, ground and surface water contamination, private property contamination, public health impact or displacement, storage and disposal of post-use polymer, plastic polymer, and incidental contaminants or impurities, and transportation incidences. As a resident of Upson, I'm asking for this safety net to be established to protect the community against these things in the event of project abandonment, bankruptcy, liquidation, or closure. Other states and some other counties in Georgia have implemented similar legislation or ordinances for plastic industry and/or other new or risky industries. Considering the recent developments regarding Brightmark, the Indiana bankruptcy, the bond defaults, this precaution is more critical than ever to ensure that our community is not left vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, I have Mr. Mike, looks like Greenman, is that right?
My name is Michael Greenman, and I am a Upson County resident. I urge the Commission to consider emergency adoption of a moratorium on chemical recycling in our community to protect our environment, public health, and local economy. While proponents claim this technology offers a solution to plastic waste, the reality is, is much more troubling. Chemical recycling relies on high heat processes like pyrolysis and gasification, which release harmful pollutants into our air and water. These facilities increase industrial traffic, strain local resources, and often fail to deliver on their promises, leaving communities burdened with pollution and economic uncertainty. Across the country, similar projects have led to fires, financial failures, and unfulfilled job creation claims. A moratorium on chemical recycling has already been passed in Youngstown, Ohio, and Templeton, Massachusetts, for this same situation, and would give our community the same benefits and time to study the true risks of chemical recycling, investigate the other Brightmark failures in Ashley, Indiana, and ensure that we are not left to deal with the consequences of an unproven and hazardous industry. Instead of allowing our town to become a testing ground for experimental waste management, we should focus on solutions that prioritize sustainability and public well-being. We need a pause. Brightmark has recently defaulted on bonds and filed for bankruptcy. They are selling their plant in Indiana, a plant that, by the way, never achieved production scale. The Board of Commissioners has the authority to impose a moratorium on any company that intends to convert plastic, or plastic waste, through certain chemical conversion processes, including gasification and pyrolysis. I strongly urge you to act now and consider a moratorium for our important economy and the health and safety of our community.
My name's Rusty Blackson, three eighty seventh Fembra Road to Rock, I'm not ashamed of what I learned. I'd like to echo especially what Ms. Tammy said, or what Michael said, I wish you'd give us consideration. And the board has in the past done something of this nature, because if I'm not mistaken, a solar farm was coming in, and a bond was required for them to have a cleanup if they left after twenty years, am I wrong in that? I thought so. So what would be wrong with not just in targeting Brightmark, but yes, establishing an ordinance for a surety bond for any industry that comes into the county that might cause some environmental hazard to our community? It could be as small as one or two percent of the investment cost of that project or industry when they're finished setting up shop. Take fun examples, maybe some of you familiar with a company in the lineup called Pullaparks, big scrapyard, automobile salvage. You go there, you buy a fender, you buy a wheel, whatever, you pay for it, you go and fix your car. What if one of those came to Upson County and just set up about fifty acres of land, brought in fifteen hundred cars, operated for five years, took everything they could off of them, scrapped out the mess, crushed the vehicles, and up and left? Well, they didn't go for a bond, they're not asking for any help from the county, but they left a fifty-acre tract that's contaminated with motor oil, antifreeze, brake fluids, things of that nature, that somebody is going to have to clean up, or it's gonna be fifty acres that's not usable for anything, like you was mentioning acreage a while ago. That being said, that type of business, if they had to post a surety bond, that would be some backfall for the county to lean on to clean up this property. That's just another thought that I had. Another subject I want to ask, I'll make my opinion on, Mr. Chairman, you've been asking around what to do with the courthouse. The courthouse is a historical monument, there's a grand site to everywhere to preservation of this, this structure. What would be the board's thought of moving the commission board and your finance department into the ground floor of the courthouse? And then when you have a meeting with this many people, your meeting room's upstairs, you can seat two hundred up there. That's just something to ponder on, it may not be feasible, but something to look into. And the third thing I'd, you probably go say I'm chastising, but you mentioned the word transparency a while ago. In the last board meeting, you had a consent agenda. These were items that you discussed at the workshop, I suppose, but took no official action or vote on them, but you slid, you put those items into consent agenda. The public learned what was in that agenda through the local legal organ, that you were salvaging equipment or all. Do, you salvaged it. Mr. Chairman, be more transparent than when you say to ask for a vote to approve the consent agenda. Notify the public what's in that agenda, we're selling off cars, we're selling off computers, we're selling off furniture. Please be more transparent about it. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Dana Fowler, and I'm a resident of Upson County. The last commissioner meeting that I attended, Chairman Brew, you made the statement that there was nothing that the current sitting board can do about Brightmark coming to Upson County. My question is, if you can't, then who can? If you're listening to your constituents, then you know, we, the majority of the citizens do not want this in our community. As an elected official of Upson County, you're expected to represent your constituents and be our voice. You say you can do nothing, I have a couple of questions, suggestions that I'd like to share with you. Have you asked Attorney English to research the laws to determine what can be done to make it difficult or less attractive for Brightmark to come to our community? Have you met with the IDA to express the voices of your constituents? Have you met with state officials to seek guidance on how to stop Brightmark from coming, from moving forward? Have you met with local government officials in Ashley, Indiana, to see what information they would be willing to share with you regarding how Brightmark has impacted their small community? I will ask the question that others have asked, are you willing to share your individual stance regarding Brightmark locating to Thompson? If not, I ask you why? As citizens of Upson County, we have a right to understand how our elected officials feel about this. In closing, if you allow Brightmark to come to Upson County, it could be one of the largest downfalls in our community's history.
Thank you.
I just signed a raw paper, sorry.
All right. Ms. Mary Pat Jones?
Hi, I'm Mary Pat Jones, thirty down Fork Drive, Upson County. I have been following this Brightmark thing for a while, I've gone to several meetings, read the newspaper, looked at all the research that's posted on Facebook, and, you know, it seems that very few people want it. I don't know anybody that wants it, I know the IDA must want it, or wouldn't keep pushing it, but, you know, I kinda came to the conclusion, you know how your mother says, you know, you need some things that are good for you, but you don't want to, you know, like, I don't wanna eat my vegetables, I don't like them, but your mother says, they're good for you, they're good for you. I'm a doctor, I don't see in any of the research any benefit, any, and especially to help. I look at Thompson as a place with clean air, and I'm very grateful for that. Our personal property has great water, very grateful for that. But, you know, I just, sometimes I just wanna scream and go, you know, we read this research, we're not stupid. It, there's, it doesn't say, there's nothing that looks It, there's, it doesn't say, there's nothing that looks good for it to me. Tammy, you mentioned the Public Health Trust Fund is great, you know, like, if people had health problems from this burning of this plastic. I don't want money. I want my health. I don't want to have to get money, you know, I'm sick, but I have money to go get healthcare, and I don't want that. Money will do me no good. I just really pray that the spirit of God will convict you of any greed or pride or anything that's just, this, nobody wants it. You know, y'all are responsible for caring for Upson County and its citizens, and I feel like, in this particular thing about Brightmark, that we're being taken care of like a wicked stepmother. You know, like, we don't care what you want, we don't like you anyway, you know, we're just going to do what we want, and good luck. So my heart is just to please vote no if you have any say.
Ms. Tracy? Ms. Tracy Knapp?
Tracy Knapp, 88 Ranch Track Road in Rock, in Upson County. And I've spoken with you guys before, you know how we feel about Brightmark personally. And I've heard you say that you don't have the power, or this isn't the right place. And so I've just been doing some research, like everyone else here, and just wanted to remind you of what is in your power. And in the Georgia Code, in Title 36, Chapter 9, it does give the power of county land to you all, and that land that the IDA is controlling is county land, which means it's owned by the community. And that's the land that Brightmark is supposed to be building this on. And so this is taken from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and this is referencing in quotes Title 36, Chapter 9 of the Georgia Code. Control of all property belonging to the county is vested in the county commission, which has original and exclusive jurisdiction over the control of county property. Its members are required to exercise the utmost good faith, fidelity, and integrity in dealing with that property as trustees and servants of the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that concludes the public comments. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the approval of the March 11, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
We'll move.
Second. Motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. First item is discussion and consideration on increasing the number of board members for the Board of Assessors. So if you don't know, we currently have three members of the Board of Assessors, and we are authorized to have up to five members on the Board of Assessors. So again, I think I mentioned, I just went to a valuation and taxation class, and I learned of the power of the Board of Assessors. Board of Assessors can make any property exempt from taxes. The Board of Assessors can give the chief appraiser reign to do certain things. And as I thought about this, I said, you know, again, as the Board of Commissioners, we're responsible, one thing we're most responsible for is providing services to the county, which we do by collecting taxes in order to do that, which really is your property taxes. And so we talk a lot about, oh, wanting to do what's right for the taxpayers, and I think that to provide as much resources to that office as possible for them to have oversight of the tax evaluation of our properties. And the sales ratio, you may have, may not have heard of, determines whether we are compliant with the Department of Revenue and determines how much we get to tax utilities at. And last year, we did not get to tax utilities at the 40% rate, which is what your property gets taxed at, and utilities got taxed at 36% or 34%, I forget, but it was thousands of dollars that was not realized for the county. And what does that mean for us, right? That means that we had to make up that difference, right? So there's a lot of responsibilities in that office, and I think we need to make sure we provide all the resources that we can for that office. And that's my thought on it. Any other discussion?
No, no, I mean, I'm going to say something. I mean, I think that's the only board we have that's not a five-member board, and five members makes a better vote versus three. So I think it's, it's time for a change.
I agree. In, in every board that we have, you have to have a quorum for there to be a meeting. And if you really think about it, when you have a three-member board, it only takes two members to be a quorum. So you have two individuals in the county who can make very important decisions, right? And so I think we owe it to expand the board.
Yeah, I agree.
Any further discussion?
Have we, do we have a description available to put online for the duties and responsibilities at time required?
We have some stuff on that update, but I can see what we can update.
Okay.
It's going to take a while to fill the two positions.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we agree to recruit and fill the board to our max capacity of five assessors.
I'll second.
I'll second. But Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item up for discussion and consideration of Resolution 13, 2025, requesting a performance review of the Upson County Board of Tax Assessors pursuant to Official Code of Georgia annotated Section 45 dash 48 dash 5 dash 295 dot 1. Resolution reads, "Resolution requesting a performance review of the Upson County Board of Tax Assessors pursuant to Official Code of Georgia, Section 48 dash 5 dash 295 dot 1. Whereas Georgia law specifically, Official Code of Georgia, Section 48 dash 5 dash 295 dot 1, provides a mechanism for the Board of Commissioners to request a performance review of the Board of Tax Assessors by the State Revenue Commissioner's Office to evaluate their efficiency and compliance and performance of their duties. And whereas, the Board has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Upson County to request such review to ensure the integrity and effectiveness of the property assessment process, now therefore be it resolved by the Upson County Board of Commissioners in a duly assembled meeting as follows. The Board of Commissioners hereby formally request that the State Revenue Commissioner's Office conduct a performance review of the Upson County Board of Assessors pursuant to the authority granted under Official Code of Georgia annotated Section 48 dash 5 dash 295 dot 1. The Chairman of the Upson County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized and directed to transmit this resolution to the State Revenue Commissioner's Office to take all necessary steps to facilitate the performance review process. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption, adopted the 25th day of March, 2025." Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington and a second from Commissioner Watson. Is there any discussion? Okay. I'd just like to say a few things. I know over the past six, eight months, there's been a number of issues that have arisen. Last year, we had the commercial property evaluations was of interest to many, including the city, mostly within the city. And as I mentioned, the, the industrial and commercial value did impact the amount of money we were able to tax utilities on in the previous years. There's also been some concern about valuations, people comparing one house in a neighborhood and another house in a neighborhood, and whether that house is a rental house or whether that house is a single-family home. So those are all valid concerns. I will say that Charles, our chief appraiser, has put forth a very diligent effort to address issues that have come up. He has been very forthright in, in going forward and addressing these issues. I think we're in a much better position today than we were, say, six months ago. I did personally sit down with Charles today. I met with him and the tax commissioner, and we talked about this, and, and we got a very positive response from, from Charles and, and the assessors, right? And I explained, many of you know I was in the Army, I was a commander in the Army, and when you walk into a new unit in the Army, about 90 days in, your higher headquarters comes down and does an inspection, and they tell the new commander, hey, this is what's going well in your unit, this is where Micah needs some work, and this really needs some work. And that's really what we're doing here, is we want to know baseline where we're at, and if we need to fix some things, we need to address them, right? And I believe, for one, when they do the review, that one of the things they'll tell us is, you know what, the Board of Commissioners could have done better at providing resources for the tax assessors, for the Board of Assessors. And that's what we just talked about, providing more, more people, people resource, human resources. So we're going to do that, that's, we believe that. And so as we do this tonight, I don't want anyone to take away that we have an issue with the chief appraiser or the Board of Assessors. What we're doing is trying to make sure we do the best we can for the taxpayers of Upson County. We want to know where we are, and we want to do the right thing. I just want to share that with you.
Checks and balance.
Exactly. Any, any further comments? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item is comments. So, attorney, do you have anything for us?
We had a successful day in pro day court today. It's trial day, and we resolved about 90, I would say 99% of all but two cases. One didn't show up, and one was continued, so the rest of the cases were disposed of on behalf of the county.
Okay. County manager, you?
So, Mr. Chairman, I've got two updates for you in your folder. One is a list of roads that we're currently resurfacing and where we're at with that project. We're currently about, if you look at it from a material standpoint, we're about 42% complete, even though that's only about six roads, it's nearly half the project from a material standpoint. The full update's in there. Also provide an updated schedule on the completion of the Thurston Well, which is, we'll say, going swimmingly. And if you have any specific questions, let me know. We are attempting to, and I think we have decided, that we'll, we're going to move our work session date to April 9, 9:00 AM at the airport, which is a week later than most people would anticipate it would be. We're beginning to build that agenda, and if you have, if any commissioner has something that they would like to be included on that agenda, please get it to me now. And lastly, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Watson's baseball team for, who? He, he has really taken the flag and run with it. He's, and he and his son are participating in one of our newer recreation programs, won't go into details, but they went to a regional tournament with much humility and anticipation and came away champions.
All right.
So we always appreciate it as staff when our elected officials participate in the, in the programs that we provide, and that they, they are participating at a very high level, so congratulations. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Beeks?
I'm not saying one way or the other that I'm for Brightmark or I'm against it. I want y'all to think that I'm not listening to what your concerns are, because I am. Me myself would like to see some type of safety net for the citizens of Upson County, because who knows what may happen five, 10 years down the road? And I think to have some type of assurance that, well, this company come to Thomaston, oh, they don't come to Thomaston, the citizens will be protected at all time, and they deserve that. We deserve it. We deserve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Amen.
All right. Commissioner Ossos?
Well, first I have a question for staff. Do you have an update on the cleaning contract for the Justice Center? I mean, I kind of just...
It's going to be on our work session agenda, yeah, and we have a recommendation to come up.
All right. And I also would just like to address the audience and say, you know, thank you for showing up, thank you for being passionate about it, thank you for not just laying down and taking what comes your way. You know, in light of the events of some of the things that happened, yeah, it's concerning. You know, that's all, you know, look, I guess ultimately, if you, if you want to know, I don't, I don't think anybody in this room has ever talked to me, is if you want to know something from me or how I feel about something, just ask me, call me up, ask me. I'm easily accessible, but, but right now, yes, it, it's concerning. And, and I, I encourage you to keep it quiet up, don't, don't, you know, I realize this is just not something that you just don't want in your backyard, there's implications of this, and, and I thank you for being passionate about it.
They, they took most of it. I'm going to, I'm going to pack it, you know, jump on their backs and ride that one out from it. But, yeah, I appreciate everybody, you know, I mean, we got to know what people want, and people got to voice their concerns. And my personal opinion on the whole shooting match is it wasn't going to work anyway, but that doesn't mean anything. Now that some other stuff has come above, we'll just see what happens. And I just appreciate y'all getting involved.
Troy?
Yep. I had two items related to the wreck, but I'm narrowing it down to one, because Jason started. But first, I would like to echo both, all of the commissioners, and I'm, I'm in agreement with what they said and how their thought processes are, and that's, that's pretty much what mine are with Brightmark. But the one item related to wreck is this Saturday is the opening day for the wreck baseball and softball. It's going to be a little different, it's going to be in the evening, so we can showcase the lights. They're, I believe, opening the doors at like 2:00 PM and having some food trucks or something like that.
And I think the official ceremony is at 4:00.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So encourage everybody to come check it out. And, you know, there'll be more there than just, if you're, even if you're not participating, there'll be fun things for kids there in the beginning, so, yeah.
And so, this is the ball parts, right? And so we still have more work to do. Can you tell where we're at right now?
Yeah, I, I mean, all of the, there was a pretty heavy punch list that was generated and some things that needed to be addressed. I believe everything has been corrected. A few items that are going to have to be done after the season, we didn't want to impact the start of the season. And then the next items on the list are the concession stands and some back cages, but that's a phase two project.
I would like to add that the most, well, the lighting is... I would like to add that the most, well, the lighting is truly amazing. I mean, it's, I mean, if you had been there and played under our old lighting, this will absolutely blow you away. I mean, the differences.
All right. We don't have Commissioner Jones drive by there.
And just, I'm not trying to manage expectations, I do want to brag about the project, but the main reason we did it, aside from the lighting, was the drainage, and it's really working perfectly. We did have some construction hiccups along the way, and we're dealing with some of those. But, you know, in the end, we got where we needed to be. And they're playing on it, and we're getting some really great reviews about it. Thanks for mentioning that.
All right. All right. So I just got a few things to say. I'll start off with Brightmark, that seems to be the topic of the day, right? So I did say in the past, you know, this board was not a decision maker at Brightmark. The Board of Commissioners was not a decision maker from Brightmark. And Tracy mentioned county property. The industrial development area is not county property. It's owned by the Industrial Development Authority, which is a separate constitutional entity. Now, we do have two elected officials on that board. I happen to be the newest one. Also, the mayor of Thomaston is on the board. And then we have four other members, two from the county, one who is just appointed, he hasn't been there either, and two from the city. I'll tell you, they're all good people, right? And I believe they have acted in good faith to do what's best for the community, right? When it comes to, hold on, hold on. When it comes to Brightmark, they have a contractual agreement. And I want to explain that a little bit. Their contractual agreement between the IDA and Brightmark is a land purchase agreement, right? It is to sell them some land out there across from the airport. At this point, the only thing that has happened is Brightmark has given money to the Industrial Development Authority. They had to put down money, and they have to continue to put down money during this period where they intend to purchase the land. They have not purchased the land. It is in fact, if you were buying a home, you would put down earnest money. Once you say, I want to buy this house, you have to put down earnest money. And then if you pull out and say, I don't have the funds, I can't buy a house, they get to keep your earnest money. That's where the IDA is at. The IDA is holding money, right? And the company, Brightmark, has conditions they have to meet over time in order to be able to purchase that land. Those conditions include being able to get all the necessary permitting from the Environmental Protection Division of the State of Georgia, who oversees that. And proving that they have the financing to execute the project. They have a window to do that. If they fail to do that, the IDA is out nothing. In fact, they still have the money that Brightmark has given them, right? So what we've seen over the past week, two weeks, is Brightmark makes some financial maneuvering. Financial maneuvering, you may be very familiar with a gentleman named Donald Trump, who does the same type of thing in his business ventures, where he files for bankruptcy or restructures. It's all designed to improve their financial position. They must have the financial positioning and be able to get the financing in order to do the project. The county is not financing the project. The IDA is not financing the project. It is entirely upon Brightmark to go out and get the world to invest money to do this project. If they do it and they get the permitting, we'll be at that stage. If they do not, they will lose their earnest money, so to speak. So that is really where we're at. I want everybody to understand it's a contractual agreement, right? Now, the IDA, they have to hold the land. That's their contractual agreement. If the IDA were to walk away and say no at this point, the IDA would be subject to, you know, financial tort, right, you know, going to court type deal. So it is basically a land purchase agreement at this point, and there's nothing, it started in April of last year, we're a year in, right? So they're a year into their deal. They have not produced the financing. I suspect they're trying to. And I'll say this about Brightmark. I did the same thing everybody else did when I heard about Brightmark. I Googled. That's what everybody did, right, when April last year, I Googled. And Dave's over there, and I told Dave the exact same thing on the radio. When I Googled him, the first thing I saw was not great. It was a fire, right? And that's what I said, my biggest concern about Brightmark is fire. But to be fair, we have a paint industry out there. We have another plastics industry out there. We have a paper industry that uses chemicals out there. We have a lot of fire protection things we need to worry about out there, right? So that, hold on, hold on, hold on. Say, listen to me. So what I'm saying is, that's what my first impression was, that, hey, man, this could be really a fire issue, and we need to make sure that we have fire protection in our county to deal with something like this. And that's all I've said on the public record. I said that when I was a candidate, right? We all have individual thoughts about Brightmark, right? But we're public entities right now, we represent our constituents, we also represent our county facing outward, right? And so we have to take all that in consideration when we make public statements. I will say, Brightmark has not done a great PR job. I will say, Brightmark surely could have done better for the county and for the IDA before this news happened, you know? If I was working with somebody, I would have picked up the phone and called them, right? So, but I want you to know that the Industrial Development Authority, and I won't see Chase here tonight, but Chase has done, okay? Chase Fallon, they really did put a lot into that agreement. There's a lot of things that Brightmark has to accomplish in order for that land purchase to happen, right?
Is there a deadline for Brightmark?
There are deadlines, there are payments that Brightmark has to continue to make for that deadline to go to a certain point, right? So all those things are in the agreement. And I say all that to say that it is a legal contractual agreement between Industrial Development Authority and Brightmark, and it will play out when they do, if they do, go for the air quality permit. It will take six, eight months, and it will be an open period for anybody who wants to raise concerns. And it wouldn't even be just people in Upson County, right? It would be Lamar County or anyone else who might be around to address the process that has to happen. And that's the process. And it's not, this board is not part of the process. But I say all that to, I want you to understand what is actually happening, because, you know, I didn't know all of what was actually happening until I became part of Industrial Development Authority. And so I think it's important to share everything that we can share, right? And when we talk about being transparent, there are certain things you can share, and there are certain things you can't share. And if you can share them, I say you should share them. And that's what I try to do, right? That's all the comments I have, well, I got one more comment. Nothing to do with Brightmark. All about taxes. Because, you know, I talked about on the rand, I do things in the best interest of taxpayers of Upson County. House Bill 581, the cleanup bill will be going through probably this week. We were opted in, we did not opt out. The city did not opt out, right? So what that means is we'll be eligible to participate in the FLOS, floating local option sales tax. We would like to reach out to the city as a county. I believe that it should be elected representatives talking about how this one penny gets divided up. And so we'll reach out to the city and coordinate that so that we can have those negotiations and get it on the ballot, if that's what the public wants. I think it's a great, a great benefit of that bill. It will help reduce the property taxes of every individual in this county, and we're looking forward to getting after that. We will talk about how we want to do it publicly, and that's my promise to you. So I thank you for coming out here tonight. I understand your concerns. And I just ask that you realize that everybody who's involved in that, whether they're on the IDA, whether they're on this board, they're all human beings, right? And we all have families. So when you're on the Facebook, when you're being the keyboard warrior, please remember we're talking about someone who's a member of this community. And I believe they're trying to do what's best for the community in the capacity that they have, with the constraints that they have. And they may not be able to share with you everything at that time. So that's all I have to say. Anybody else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
I got a motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Ellington. All in favor? Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
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 Thank you, Mr. Allen.